Good evening. We'll call to order the city, El Dorado City Commission meeting for June 18th. Would we have roll call, please?
Mayor Haynes.
Present.
Commissioner Guthrie.
Here.
Commissioner Lewis.
Here.
Commissioner Badway.
Here.
Commissioner Wilkinson, present.
Thank you. Next would be invocation. You lead us in invocation.
I guess Corey Landis with Real Life Church. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come before you, before the people of the city and deal with the business that needs to go on. We thank you for our great country, for our state, for our city, our system of government. We pray tonight that you would bless our city staff, workers, mayor, and the commission members. I pray that you would give them tonight wisdom, understanding, guidance, discernment as they move through the business of the evening. Your word tells us that governments have been placed over people to bring peace and joy. And so we pray, God, that tonight, through the efforts and the decisions of this body, that that indeed would happen. We thank you for all that you give us and for this great place to live. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance. If you join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a full house tonight. Pretty important procedures. Next on our agenda would be the swearing of fire officers. We have someone, how that's gonna go? Chief?
Captain Rose. Lieutenant Carson. Master firefighter Fissler. Firefighter Price, if you can help there, please.
Could you read your name? It would be that for me. I, State Your Name.
I, Captain Rose.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear?
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Kansas.
The Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge?
Faithfully discharge.
The duties of?
The duties of?
Stateary position?
Firefighter.
As the City of El Dorado, Kansas.
As the City of El Dorado, Kansas.
So help me God.
So help me God.
With these promotions, the El Dorado Fire Department will be back to full staff. All our positions will be filled and we're ready to serve the public. Tonight's special for these guys, we're a big family with the fire department. With that, I've asked each one of these individuals to face somebody influential to come up and pin their badge on that. So, pinning Captain Rose will be his wife, Kristen. Pinning Lieutenant Carson will be his wife, Lindsay. Pinning Master firefighter Caleb Fissler will be his fiancee, Stormy. And pinning firefighter Grace Price will be his brother, Brandon.
Caleb, wouldn't I influential on you?
Yes, sir. You're second choice. That's what I'm saying.
I don't care. I don't mind coming in second.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
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 Thank you.
I'd like to thank the commission for their time this evening. Gentlemen, we're dismissed.
Thank you.
Take this opportunity to say thank you to the El Dorado Fire Department. Welcome and welcome aboard. Thanks. Thank you to everyone. We'll move on to, we do not have personal appearances. Public comments. Anybody from the public wish to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll move on to consent agenda. Two items in your consent agenda. Have a chance to look at these. I think minutes were omitted from our consent agenda this time. We'll see that in our next consent. Tabitha, is that correct?
I forgot to attach them, so because you didn't have time to read them, I just took them off until next time.
Everybody's, thank you. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda?
Okay, so just to clarify, like, there's nothing, like, we were kind of discussing earlier about the license. The way there was, I mean, it's part of the consent agenda, but what, I guess there's no backup information coming to us, and I just kind of want to clarify.
The mayor has a copy of the license in front of him for when, if it's approved, you sign, or he signs it. But the information that we get for the license is not public, so I can't submit it in here where it comes public. So, it just, the license lists it to people responsible for whatever group is applying, and it'll, and it lists their personal information, and then just says where and when they're going to have the license available. And so, this one is available at Mac Stadium during the Broncos games. And they'll be selling out of the concession stand there. So, it'll be three, it's just a 3-2 license at this point, so.
Is this new?
Yes. They're, they're going to see how this goes this year, and given the change in the licensing next year, we're gonna have to have some different conversations, but we'll see what comes of that hopefully in the fall.
Okay. So, is it the ownership of the Broncos that's going to be responsible?
Mm-hmm. Dog and the key buck.
Okay. Do I just, we normally get backup information for stuff, and that's why I'm just trying to.
These are the only things that you wouldn't, that you don't get information for, and just because, again, they're protected.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would say the consent agenda as presented be approved.
Okay. It's been moved in second. Any further question or comment? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Okay. Not having old business, we'll move on to new business, which would be a public hearing for project number 491, the paving of Griffith Street.
Yes, Commissioner, this evening you said as a public hearing to spread the assessments on the paving of Griffith Street and Locust Avenue. The project is complete, so I ask you to hold the public hearing and consider the ordinance spreading the assessments.
Okay. Any further questions for Scott on this, before we open the public hearing? Okay. So, at this time, we'll open for public hearing. Anybody wish to comment on the paving assessments for Griffith Street? Seeing none, we'll close public hearing. Move on to a motion.
I move to approve ordinance number G-1279, an ordinance levying special assessments on certain property to pay the cost of internal improvements in the City of El Dorado, Kansas, as previously authorized by resolution number 2818, as amended by resolution number 2833 of the city, and providing for the collection of such special assessments.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further comment? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Next on our agenda would be recreational water district five contract approval.
Yes, Commissioner, this evening you said as a public hearing to spread the assessments on the paving of Griffith Street and Locust Avenue. The project is complete, so I ask you to hold the public hearing and consider the ordinance spreading the assessments.
Okay. Any further questions for Scott on this, before we open the public hearing? Okay. So, at this time, we'll open for public hearing. Anybody wish to comment on the paving assessments for Griffith Street? Seeing none, we'll close public hearing. Move on to a motion.
I move to approve ordinance number G-1279, an ordinance levying special assessments on certain property to pay the cost of internal improvements in the City of El Dorado, Kansas, as previously authorized by resolution number 2818, as amended by resolution number 2833 of the city, and providing for the collection of such special assessments.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further comment? None. We'll have roll call.
Commissioner Wilkinson.
Yes.
Mayor Haynes.
Yes.
Commissioner Guthrie.
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis.
Yes.
Commissioner Badway.
Yes.
Thank you. Move on to item 12 on our business, on our new business agenda, which would be lake debt. Thank you.
Thank you.
The item here before you is a continuation of discussion from the other day, previous study session concerning lake debt as it relates to stages two and three that we discussed. Staff's recommendation right now is to proceed with prepayment of stages two and three. The total amount outstanding on those two stages is approximately $8.3 million, give or take, at a decimal point, change anyway. So, about $8.3 million, the city has been saving up cash and has also been investing funds to, for the purpose of paying down lake debt over the last, well, several years. And recently, we had learned that our investment strategy, for a variety of reasons, most notably, the interest rate environment has not been producing returns that we had been assuming were going to happen, and secondly, we had been investing in some interest, some securities that we were not really eligible to invest in. So, by changing our strategy to realign with current market conditions, as well as what we are allowed to invest in, staff started taking a look at it. And because we have about $8 million of cash and equivalents currently on hand, we would have near enough money to pay off stages two and three. We would have a little bit of carryover in order to pay off the remaining balance. So, we brought the question to the commission of whether or not the option would be appropriate to pay off stages two and three, understanding that future stages are currently compounding and would be, that debt would be amortized at such time as when it is activated. But this would allow the city, in essence, to save approximately $6 million in interest payments from now until the end of the mature maturation dates for stages two and three. And so, we brought this to the commission's attention, and the commission seems to be amenable to the idea. If there is additional information or any additional actions that the commission desires staff to collect, then we would ask for you to provide that. Otherwise, we would ask that the commission authorize staff to take such other action as the commission deems appropriate to begin the process of paying down stages two and three for the 2019 budget. So, we wouldn't do it for this year. We're aiming for actually part of next year's budget, but if there's any additional information that you all need to confirm that decision, then we can definitely get that prepared so that you can make that. But this is really just to confirm the direction that the commission is, was providing at the last meeting, so that staff is clear on what exactly you all want us to do. In addition to that, there would be a record showing that direction, so that in case, in the future, a commission or city manager has questions on what was the direction and why did they take that action, someone can look back on the record and track it down and figure out what actually happened.
David, did you, you may have said it and I missed it, wouldn't move the first time. Did you say that if we do this, pay off these two stages, that it will save us approximately $6 million? Or, did you say that?
Yeah, that's correct.
I just missed it. You wrote it, I just.
Well, I mean, I just think, I'm, I'm all for this. I think this is probably the best way to go, to get it. I mean, it's best for the city at large. It secures the water, it locks it down, it's paid off, it's ours. We're not, we've, it's just, I think that the guys that made this deal to make this lake happen, this is probably exactly what they would expect us to do, is to pay it off at that stage, and then move on and try to figure out what to do with the second half, second half of it, so.
I concur with that.
I, I agree. I mean, this is all very, very appealing numbers, and I, and it's, and retiring debt is a great thing to do. My only, my only thought here is that we, and David, you alluded to it, if there's any other further direction, this is, this is a, this is a big deal for our community. We're quite proud of our water, and we want to make sure that we handle it, and we all making good decisions with that. And I, I'm, I'm gonna compare apples to oranges here just a little bit, but, you know, we thought we were making a no, this looks like a no-brainer deal. We thought, the commission thought they were making a no-brainer deal some years ago in Windmill, and, and I think I would like for David and the staff's assurances that we get the financial advisor to look at it and see if they come up with the same opinion. In my mind, I think, I, I, this is by no means any kind of discount to the work we've done, but I just think, in your, in our and Dave and staff's best interest, that there's a, for the third party to look, to make sure that the same answers are, that we come to the same, same opinion. So, my thought, I, I'm okay with this direction. I'm okay seeking this, but I would like for this, for a, I would like to have that, that information back before we make this final decision to do it.
Have you talked with our financial advisors at all about this?
Not at this, no.
Okay.
So, Vince is, or the mayor's correct, we can get a financial advisor to confirm the analysis and make sure that we're making the correct assumptions and everything.
Wouldn't think that would take much.
No, I wouldn't think so either. I mean.
Well, he just, it was just presenting last, like, a year ago with options. I saw, I mean, I have the folder at home that where he was talking about where the investments were and whatnot.
Right. So, I guess, that's my position. I'd, I'd like to see, I'm all for this. Again, it looks like a no-brainer. Let's just, let's, let's get.
Well, since we're not gonna do it till, we're actually not gonna do it till next year.
We got time.
Right.
I support this direction. I just would like, like us to everybody have really firm ground to be on, very defensive, defendable, not defensive, defendable.
So, you're asking us to table it?
No, actually, if you would, go ahead and take action on directing the city manager to seek a financial advisor to review the prepayment of stages two and three, and then that'll give me firm direction. I'll take that and bring back that report for your consideration.
That's what I'm asking. Yeah. So, we can have in the file both, both, and if they're willing to give us some sort of written opinion, and, and a couple that with a legal opinion, that we can put that with all our other records and feel very comfortable about the decision.
Okay.
Just don't spend over 50, 60 bucks.
That might be a little hard to do. I'll do my best.
So.
Don't make that part of the motion.
So, do we, do we amend this motion to say approve the prepayment strategy with?
To seek, to seek.
And to seek.
And to seek.
Don't, don't approve the prepayment strategy yet. Say, just say, move to direct the city manager.
Proceed with prepayment.
Direct city manager to seek.
Direct the city manager to seek the advice of a financial advisor on the prepayment strategy.
Okay, got it.
Don't, yeah. Let's not.
Ready?
Yeah.
I move to direct the city manager to seek the advice of a financial advisor on the prepayment strategy of stages two and three of the lake debt.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Okay. Thank you. Item 13 on our, on our agenda would be rural water district five contract approval.
The rural water district number five contract is actually due to expire on July 1st of 2019. They provided us with a, an amendment to the existing contract, which is actually going to amend, an amendment that was done, oh, not too long ago. The original, I believe, was signed in July of 1978, if this reads correctly. So, the agreement was originally done in 78, then it was amended, and now they're asking for an amendment to that contract. In essence, this amendment just extends the existing contract of the terms and conditions for another 40 years, alighting with the last contract, which was extended for 40 years. From the, the original contract was a 40-year contract. The middle amendment changed the quantity of water that rural water five was authorized to purchase from the city without getting prior written consent from the city, and actually went up. This one does not do that, it just, is just asking for an extension of the term, as they are up for renewal. Other than that, rural water five's rates are established by a formula that is one and a half times, no.
1.75.
1.75 times the current city rate, so that's presently established by ordinance. So, it doesn't change anything. That just changes the term in which they are, which the agreement will be in effect.
Is 40 years traditional?
It has been in the past. Doesn't necessarily mean it has to be that moving forward. Some agreements are 20 years, some are 30. It just depends on, I mean, there's a wide variety of factors. I've seen water contracts that are for 50 years, but the previous one was 40.
50. That'll be 111. Oh, it'll be 82.
It'll be 95.
Okay.
Now, it's also not to say, the point of clarification is that, it's not to say that the contract can't change between now and then. The contract does state that the parties agree to meet and negotiate good faith if there ever occurs a time when something needs to be changed in the agreements, or conditions change that warrant a change to the terms. For example, rural water five requires an amount of water in addition, or in excess of what they are currently contracted to purchase from the city, we would come back and negotiate those terms at that point in time. So, it's not that this would set anything in stone per se, but it does give rural water five some clarity on their contract term.
And 9.5 million a month is a, a, a.
0.3, 0.33 gallons or million gallons a day, if I do my math right.
Scott, do you know off the top of your head, the total amount?
300, 30,000 gallons a day.
Not, not, it's 9.5 million gallons.
9.5 million gallons of water a month, so. You got 0.316.
They, they are our largest rural water district customer. Their territory is, actually served within portions of the city of Andover, east of Augusta, and along that US 54 corridor.
East, west of Augusta?
West, I'm sorry, yeah, correct.
Okay.
And rural.
Yeah, and they have acquired an additional rural water district in southern Butler County. Geographically, they're the largest rural water district in the whole county.
So, does this disagreement, you said they acquired a rural water district in the western part of the county as well? Does this district, does this disagreement fit into that whole, is for their whole boundary? It's not what they once were, and that's a separate contract? How does that work when they acquire a rural water district? This is for their whole geographic region?
I believe as they acquire, it would have been Butler 8, I believe, that they acquired, and Butler 8 is now Butler 5.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions? If not, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to direct the city manager to sign the water contract with rural water district number five.
Second. Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Next on our agenda would be recreation, smoking at recreational facilities.
The Parks Recreation Department has come across a situation that is in the gray area of our current ordinance with respect to no smoking. So, they've had a couple of complaints at recreation facilities where people are vaping, and vaping is not adequately defined as a, as no smoking. You can't define no smoking and include vaping, and that you have to define it separately. So, presently, our no-smoking ordinance does not prohibit vaping at our outdoor recreation facilities. And so, right now, the recreation staff has been asking people, when they get complaints, to refrain from vaping on, in these facilities, but there's nothing, there's no enforcement mechanism behind it. And so, what we are asking the commission to consider is an amendment to the ordinance that would prohibit vaping at these, these facilities, much like we do currently with smoking.
So, let me guess, there was someone, somewhere, being obnoxious and big clouds of vape? Is that kind of what the story is?
I believe so, yes.
I mean, I'm just shot in the dark. Yeah. They go hand in hand. So, yeah.
I guess the question I have is, has vaping and E6 been determined, secondhand vapor and E been determined hazardous to your health, like secondhand smoke's been determined?
Um, that I'm not completely clear on. I don't know if you've heard of anything.
So, I guess I'm, I mean, if it's not, if you're true, if you're just being annoying, that's one thing, but if you're doing something that ruins the health of your, somebody that's next to you, that's another. If it's not hazardous to your neighbor, to, how, how do, I guess I'm having a hard time being so respectful.
But on the other hand, they can go to the parking lot and do it.
I think it depends on what they use in their device. Some of it is tobacco-based, and others is just like the flavor.
Sugar water.
The flavor of nicotine.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, it just depends on what they use, on what, what is in the smoke when it comes out.
But, I guess what's, is it, even in the smoking, is it the secondhand? I, I, I don't know, I don't know that I've got enough information here to say that we should have an ordinance to restrict somebody's freedom to do that personally.
Agreed.
It just seems, I, I, I get the annoyance. I don't, I don't know that I appreciate it next door to me, but it's still, unless it's been determined as hazardous to health, I don't know how I can restrict somebody's rights like that. But, anyway, it's why we're all up here. Any other comments?
I would say I think everywhere I see no smoking signs, I see no vaping signs also. If you see one, you see the other, and I don't think this is gonna be any different than, you know, anywhere else in the world. It just, you can't, and, in the end, I, before it's all said and done, they're gonna, it is gonna be hazardous, that, you know, it'll be something. You could probably pull an article right now that says that out of some publication somewhere.
Okay.
And, in the end, I, before it's all said and done, they're gonna, it is gonna be hazardous to, you know, it'll be something, you could probably pull an article right now that says that out of some publication somewhere.
All right, if there's nothing further, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor? This is just a youth, this is just a youth stuff, and adult games, you can do it, but it says youth recreational facilities?
Yes, the first ordinance that was passed a couple of years ago specified youth activities only, so, I, I think, I think even like the Broncos are exempt from this, because those are, those are considered adult activities. So, just our youth recreational activities is the only thing, and we just ask them to go to the Broncos.
Even though, even though youths go to the Broncos games and sit up there, but...
At the time, the commission, I think you were on, I think you might have been the only one on it at that point, but they were, there was at least one or two people that were very specific about wanting to limit it to the youth activities, that way the adults could still...
Who remembers that?
I think Sherry would remember that too.
You know, adult softball is still going big, and I don't think they wanted to restrict that complex, if it's an adult-sponsored event, and there's grownups out there, it's more or less, when youth-sponsored, other adult-sponsored, youth recreation activities.
And that's what this is? This is just the youth?
Yes, this, this just amends the previous ordinance, which should be looking a packet, the previous ordinance is on the next stage, and it is only youth, youth activities at, I think, McDonald Stadium, when it's a youth activity, the Central Park, the Walnut Valley Field, the lake, and then East Park. Those are the only four places, and just for youth.
And I, I don't even, I don't even take it in fact, if someone rents our facility, that's, that's up to that.
The what?
Yeah, this is, this is city-sponsored activities, not, if someone rents our facility, that's not, it's...
Say someone's holding a youth baseball tournament down there, that, that would be their ordinance.
Oh, really? Could get confusing.
Yeah.
I'd be, I'd be in favor of being kind of an all or none, you rent it, and those are the restrictions to renting it.
Yeah, if you look at B on the first ordinance, it's restricted during city-sponsored youth recreational events.
I kind of feel the same way you do, Mayor.
All right, any other comments, we can entertain a motion.
Are we waiting for more information, or we can have... Can somebody Google that and see if it's...
We can.
You want to table this for another, for a future meeting?
If you'd like to tell us what kind of information you guys would like to see, we can, I mean, are you, do you want to see, like, is it a health issue, or...
Well, I guarantee you, you're gonna find somebody that says it is.
Well, I guess that's kind of the conundrum, is that, I'm sure that if we Googled it, we'd find something for both sides of the equation, and I don't know as though staff is qualified to make a determination on which study is accurate or not.
See what the American Medical Association says.
Surgeon General.
Yeah, surgeon general, yeah, there you go. What's he say?
Can we also include what the local surrounding communities have done, see if other cities have done something?
Sure.
See what the average is, if you will?
Sure.
There aren't a lot yet, I can actually answer that question. Overland Park and, or like two other places, but it was mainly large cities. Is it Lawrence, kind of, or maybe?
Lawrence wouldn't surprise me.
Because Overland Park's what we may start, we amended off of.
Okay, so we table this for further information?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. Next on our agenda would be rescheduling of our July sixteenth city commission meeting to the seventeenth?
Yes, to the seventeenth, because Drums Across Kansas is scheduled for the sixteenth. The commission has, in the past, rescheduled that meeting in case there are commissioners that would like to attend that event, and/or the general public, who may have business for the commission at that, at that meeting. So, we are recommending that we reschedule that meeting from July sixteenth, which is a Monday, to the following Tuesday, July seventeenth, it'll be held at the same time, six thirty PM, right here at City Hall.
Okay. Need a motion?
I move to reschedule the July sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen, meeting to July seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen, at six thirty PM.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved in second, any further comment? All in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign? Okay. All right, motion carries four to one.
Did you notice we all looked at you?
That was my goal.
All right. Nick will be here Monday, and we'll be here Tuesday.
We'll get a lot done Monday.
Okay, moving on to reports.
Again, youth commission won't meet till September. Friday night, I was at the oil museum for a presentation on soda fountains in Kansas, and the speaker was from out of state, which is fine, how can you speak on soda fountains in Kansas when you don't live here, but whatever. Anyway, the first thing she noticed was the flowers on the North Street, North Main Bridge, and then the flower baskets through town on her way to the oil museum, and she commented on that before she even started to speech, just to pass on that we do good with those baskets. Second thing, I got a call from a gentleman concerned about the drainage at Park Street and Arthur, down by Skelly School.
Yes, and, and I can report that the school district is, is taking action on this very soon to remedy some of the issues with the water ponding down there in the detention basin, and constantly being wet and soaking the roadway and the valley gutter that is across Park Avenue there. I spoke with the district just as recently as last week, they've been, they are engaging a contractor to do that work, so hopeful it will solve some of the issues down there of the constant wetness. Now flooding during heavy rains, that area down in there is a flood plain, the majority, so those won't solve those issues, but the constant wet pavement down there, these issues will help resolve some of that.
Thanks. That's it. Short and sweet.
Prairie Trails had a meeting, however, I managed to miss it, not because I wasn't reminded, but because I missed the reminder, but I, I read the minutes, and there's some new members and some new perspectives, and there were a lot of questions asked, and inquiries made, what, and I think we're gonna get a lot of input from the advisory board, there obviously, everybody on that board is passionate about the game of golf, which is good, so there were some concerns, but there were also many good, good compliments and comments, so I will do my utmost not to miss anymore, I apologize to staff for missing it, but anyway, that's all I have.
Greg?
Well, I, I threw my hat in for the transportation task force, but I did not get on the task force. John, was it Dabbling from the city of Hutch, a councilman, he's representing the population of forty-one thousand, and then Donald Raver from Edgerton?
Oh, Don Robinson?
Yeah, he's, he's representing small towns of seventeen hundred. Their vision was more economic, mine was more roads, because that's what I do is roads, so. I think you have to have roads before you can have economics, so.
Right.
Thanks for the effort.
Yeah.
Well, we, I haven't, neither one of mine have met since last time we've met, but I was at, Friday at the concert in the park, and I really enjoyed the eclectic bands, there was local, local guys, I wanted, the only way I could describe like the middle band was, it was like jazz fusion, which was interesting, sitting in El Dorado and listening to that, it was a good crowd, it was Barry, I think Molly, and what is the, her assistant's name? Molly and...
Caitlin.
And Caitlin. Did a great job, looks like they, they really had it under control and moving well. The other thing that they've been working on is the, the flag design, the voting for the flags has been completed. Here is, I'll keep one for myself, but I'm sure this is for you, David. And, out of, it was thirteen, thirteen hundred and seventy-one votes, and it was down to the three, and staff was great to make me a flag. This is what was voted on as the new El Dorado city flag. And of course, they all had a description, I'm not sure everybody got to see them, but the description on this one was, "The design portrays abstract images of oil derricks and wheat stalks. The blue stripe represents the Walnut River, which was significant El Dorado's founding. The design is unique in that it can be hung horizontally and vertically."
Which, exactly.
So, there it is, that is the winner, out of, what was it, a hundred and...
Fifty-three.
Hundred and fifty-three. This is the champion. And it wasn't the first one that I started out voting for, but I did vote for this particular one, so I feel, I'm pretty happy about it. I didn't get to say music or anything, so, that's all I got.
Who's gonna produce them for the city?
What?
I think we'll actually bring it to commission first for an official adoption.
Right, it's not official, this is just what the...
It just, it just is one, the public vote, at this point, it's not, it's not the official flag for, without some other, some other level of approval.
Yeah, we've got to vote to say that that's the official flag.
Okay, thank you. I have, I guess it's a couple of things, El Dorado meets this Thursday, so we'll have some report from there. This Wednesday is a two fifty-four corridor development meeting, I believe that's at the Civic Center. Chance to, there's a, there is a movement to initiate a two fifty-four corridor coalition of communities from El Dorado all the way into Wichita. We're going to have, I think, the city manager of Ke, of Bel Air, we have quite a few folks from, from that corridor joining us that day, so talking about what, what's that mean? What's the coalition mean, what's, what are, what are the goals, and, and I'm anxious, I guess, to learn a little bit more about what, what, what may come of that. I know safety is a big concern on two fifty-four, is there a way that this call, this group can have a larger voice for some funding that can take care of safety, who knows? The county has a long-range plan for the two fifty-four corridor, do we get better informed about that, understand what that means for all the communities along the route? So, starts, starts or ends in El Dorado, depends on what you want to say.
What day is it?
The time is at one PM on Wednesday, the twentieth, thank you.
Where at?
Civic Center.
Are you leading that, Scott?
No, this, this will be the second meeting that this group has had. I, I think everyone is still trying to define what kind of scope this coalition may go after, who can volunteer from various communities to take maybe a little bigger role in certain sections of, of looking, but really, really just kind of grasping, what are the goals? We've got this huge asset between all of these communities, and how do we make it safer? How do we make it more user-friendly? How do we gain off, off of what we have today as communities? I think there's a lot more to come, a lot more discussion about what this group may be, and how they may go about it.
Okay. Yeah. I guess I'm gonna be there, if there's, if anybody else wants to be there, you might let Tabitha know, so we can, I don't know whether we need to notice up or whatever on that, but I'm planning to be there. The other thing I got, I guess, is a question, we have an upcoming presentation or update on the work that's happening on our industrial park, that I think we're working with PEC on, I think we've been kind of initiated that some months ago, what's the status of that? If you're not ready to give a report, that's fine, just kind of bring it to us.
Yeah, I would love to. The ALTO survey is complete, there's drafting, draft work going on right now, put the finishing touches on that, and what the ALTO survey is, is it's a really in-depth look at a piece of property, it's researching any easements, existing infrastructure, conditions that they see on the site, so we know exactly what we have out there, so that takes a lot of work, a lot of research, a lot of survey. That portion of the work is complete, and, and actually being drafted this week. I expect to see a, a drawing of that ALTO survey early next week. From that then becomes the real planning, the planning of the corridor and easements for infrastructure, road access, all, what have you, really the land planning portion of this. I think we would, we're, we're looking at late July as having fifty percent complete, that was the original schedule, later in July, fifty percent planned to go over and review, and then in the coming months after that, come in front of you all, present the findings as they are today, as they see then, and then that'll start a process with planning commission review, public hearing, and then city commission adoption as well.
And annexation, I mean, is that property not yet annexed, or did we go ahead and do that, I don't recall?
The hundred acres that is just directly west of the Turnpike and east of Lake Mir's Fertilizer, south of Parallel, that is already in the city limits. The Glades property, as we refer to it, the one purchased just two years ago, has not been brought into the city limits yet, but it can, and, and should be, and would be at any time.
We're just talking about our property out there, or not? The others, right?
Talking about both those tracks, right?
Both those tracks, correct. And, and we're talking about those tracks specifically to the detail of the ALTO survey.
Okay.
But we're casting a broader net in the whole area of how do we plan that infrastructure, how do we... And how do we see that land and that surrounding area? Even, even as far out to K one ninety-six, how do we see that being utilized in the future of El Dorado? But the detail, the, the property that's ready, the, the two hundred acre tracks, the property that we're advertised, we want someone occupying, we want to go out and, and actively recruit folks to our community. That's, those are the two parcels we're getting that really detailed, deep information on.
Thanks, Scott.
Yep.
To, to that. Do you have another question?
No.
Okay, thanks. To that, I had, I was, I attended a county commission meeting last week. And at the end of, of the topic that I was there to listen to, the commission chair, Wajak, called, you know, to talk about the IPS. And kind of reiterate there in the, in the public forum, the county's interest in talking to the city about, about what can be done to do that. I, I know that, I think I know that you and Will, both staff has been talking to the county about what those options are. I guess I just reiterate that here. He was pretty clear that it's a public conversation that they're getting to their wits' end on that project. And we have shared more than once that we're making this investment in all this property out there. And we have a, a property out there that is a real mess and can't seem to stay in their own boundaries. So I reiterate that here in this public forum, that we want to work together what we can and make sense, what makes, makes sense to, to help mitigate that. So I would encourage, with that, encourage you to get, reach out with Will Johnson and with everybody who's blessing as well, to see, continue that conversation. Now, I know there's been a lot of things talked about that may or may not be feasible, but at the end of the day, it's, that property needs to be cleaned up.
I'm, I'm gonna be honest with you, you were way too cryptic for me, I didn't follow you. What, what are, what are you discussing?
IPS is a company that's...
What are you talking about?
Sure, I'm happy to say more. IPS is a company that is in, not in the city limits. Borders the city limits, they're on a piece of property there that they, they, whatever the process they do is, is, is recycling of some sort.
Stockpile materials.
Stockpiling materials. It over, it bleeds over their property line, they've got complaints from their neighbors. They exist there on a conditional use permit from the county. Uh, they've been threatened to, often to lose that conditional use permit, but they keep getting free up by the county. And it's kind of a, a long-running problem. Uh, and I know that as we make an investment in that area, we'd certainly encourage the county to do what they can to either revoke that conditional use permit that's been talked about? Or what are the kind of leverage can be exerted to encourage this person to clean up where they're at, so.
Seems like revoking the permit is, I mean, that pretty much is it, isn't it? You revoke their permit, they're done.
That's the only, only thing that can happen, really, right?
There's concern, I, if, I encourage you to go out on Industrial Road and take a look at what, what there's out there.
I've been out there several times, yeah, it's...
There's, there's concern about, there's concern about the amount of debris and what will happen.
Are they afraid if they revoke the permit, they'll just leave? They'll stop and leave and leave it all?
That is one concern, yes.
It is a concern, yeah.
Because the, the tenant, IPS, does not own the property, there's a, they're a tenant. And so they have no vested interest necessarily in cleaning up the property if the permit is revoked. If they, if they aren't able to operate on that track, they may not have the incentive to clean it up. They may, but they may not.
Has anybody checked to see if maybe they, they've put up a bond or anything?
Who, who owns that, that property now? Does anybody know?
Richard's.
Richard Smith?
Yeah.
So would it fall back on him to clean it up?
Yeah.
That would be correct.
I'd like to know if they've, if they've got any kind of a bond, there isn't?
A bond for, for what, to get their conditional use permit?
No, a bond, they, if the conditional use permit was granted based on the fact that they have a, some type of performance bond. So there's no bond, okay.
There's no containment out there, if it rains, that whatever's on their property moves to the other properties.
How many years has this been going on with the county?
A number of years, and I, I don't know that I've, we're prepared to get with all, I'm prepared with all those details, but I guess just to encourage to, to staff to do them, but it's been going on a number of years.
I mean, do you mean every couple of years or so that the permit has been renewed? Even though there's problems?
Well, I, I, the permit's never been renewed, it's, it's been allowed to continue to be revoked.
The city as an entity has gone to the county and, and asked them to revoke the conditional use permit based on, the conditional use permit was granted with some factors that the city had input in at the time. So the city went to the county as an entity and asked if the conditional use permit would be revoked because of those factors had not yet been complied with. Um, and the county at that point in time, that was two years ago, I think?
Somewhere around there, yeah.
Yeah, um, the county at that point in time elected to do like a wait-and-see kind of approach. And the last touch point I've had in relation to that with the county is that he had made some progress in cleaning up the property and they were pleased with the progress that he had made. I don't know that that, the amount of progress is pleasing to the city in terms of, of the impact that the property has on the city, but that's kind of where, when we ma, we made the, the plea to the county to, to work on getting it revoked. And they elected to, um, give them the opportunity to clean it up. I know a couple county commissioners walked through the property and those things, but...
The access to our hundred acres, we have to go right along with the side of that, and he's got it blocked, right?
Yeah, when, when we can access our property, usually it's blocked.
So I'd share that that conversation happened, would encourage staff to get together with the county and see what we can do to, what, what can be done. And report back, that's permissible.
Yep, we can do that.
Thank you. Alright, city manager's report, anything else from the commission?
So residents trash bags, we had ran out of them and we were going to, we kind of went through a period where we didn't reorder them, kind of determine what the demand was for those. And the public had been asking for them quite regularly. And so we're gonna go ahead and order those bags, and they will take about four weeks to get here. And then once they're here, we'll have them available for the public to purchase again. Um, so coming soon, also coming soon is the Fourth of July, which means one thing, fireworks. Fireworks sales and discharging will begin June twenty-seventh and it will continue through July fifth. You will be able to purchase and discharge fireworks from ten AM to ten PM on June twenty-seventh through July third, and then from those times, ten AM to ten PM on July fifth. However, the hours are slightly different on July fourth, from eight AM until midnight, you can purchase and discharge fireworks on the Fourth of July. We ask residents to please remove firework debris from streets. Do not discharge on public property, including parks. Do not throw fireworks, particularly hot fireworks, or specifically rather, hot fireworks, into trash cans where they could combust and cause damage to fire, or to trash cans. Um, block party applications are still available at City Hall. Um, we ask that you, if you are considering to close the street down, we ask that you get in touch with us as soon as possible because barricades are provided on a first-come, first-served basis and they may run out before then. Um, we, our Fourth of July event at East Park is going to take place beginning, actually July third at six PM, there'll be a whiffleball tournament. And then the regular July fourth activities will begin at nine AM with a bike gathering on the East Park softball field. Everyone was, or emailed, everyone was mailed a yellow flyer like this. Um, so if you have this, it, it has the full schedule of all the activities for July fourth and some more information about shooting fireworks off in El Dorado. So you might take a look at that if you have any questions or need any more information. There's a lot of great activities for July fourth, culminating with the fireworks display, which will be following the Broncos baseball game at seven PM, beginning at seven PM. And then the fireworks will be after that at McDonald Stadium.
David, I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt for a moment. This, I, the hours I gave you earlier were for the discharge of fireworks. The sale of fireworks is only allowed on July fourth from eight AM to eleven PM, not until midnight. And they're not, and it's not allowed on the fifth.
So...
You can't sell them on the fifth, but you can shoot them on the fifth.
You can shoot them on the fifth, but not sell them.
And then the last thing I have is, we have a recreation YMCA forum scheduled for June twentieth, five PM. Um, and that will be at the Civic Center, I think it was originally advertised at the Train Depot, but we are going to move that to the Civic Center so we can accommodate a large crowd. We are not necessarily expecting...
You'd better be out of there by five, one to five.
Dog, you better be out of there by two.
I'm leaving, I'm leaving at two.
Uh, five thirty.
Should take a minute.
It's like that?
Okay, thank you. Next on our agenda would be executive session.
As much time you need, Ashley.
Thirty, twenty? Thirty minutes, please.
Forty minutes.
Thirty, thirty.
Eight oh three. I move to recess and to executive session pursuant to the attorney-client privilege, privilege exception under K S A seven-five dash four-three-one-nine-B-two to discuss pending legal matters and to reconvene the meeting at eight oh three PM in the city commission room.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, any further comment? On my favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pains opposed, same sign? Motion carries five to zero, we will retire to executive session until eight oh three.